Okay, go ahead.
Good morning, everyone. This is the public hearing on the proposed 2021 annual operating plan. Of course, we're doing this by the video conference, the Zoom video conference. It's today, April 24th at 10:00 a.m. I'd like to begin by calling Stephanie, would you please call the role?
Mayor Krusen?
I'm here.
Comptroller Green?
Here.
President Reed?
Here.
All present.
Thank you all. This meeting is being held in accordance with the provisions of ordinance number 49318 approved March 2nd, 1959, which states in part, and I quote here, "The Board of Estimate and Apportionment shall review the proposed budget with the heads of departments and other agencies and hold at least one public hearing thereon, and giving at least five days' notice in the City Journal." The required notice was published in the St. Louis City Journal two times, on Tuesday, April 14th and April 21st, and in the St. Louis Post-Dispatch on Sunday, April 12th, 2020. Just by way of introductory comments, before I turn this over to Paul, all of you, I am sure, understand the difficulty that the city is facing, and frankly, all governments across the country are facing with the partial shutdown of our economy because of COVID-19. So, the budget that you're going to see today, and the budget that Paul Payne, the Budget Director, is going to walk you through, is quite a sobering budget. So, appreciate all of your thoughtful comments, and all of this information, as you probably are already aware, was posted online two days ago, so maybe you've had an opportunity to look at some of that. So, with that, if there's no objection from President Reed or Comptroller Green, I'd like to turn this over to Paul Payne.
No objection.
You object? No objection?
No objection, no objection.
Thank you. All right, Paul?
Yeah, good morning, members of the Board of VNA. Typically, given that I presented this on Wednesday, typically, the protocol would be that I'm available, and we do have the presentation available, but then we start receiving the comments from the public, so that gives that more time for this meeting. So, I don't actually go through the presentation again, but I have it available should the questions be pertinent to it. So, that's generally how we proceed with the public hearing. So, we'd be available for, I believe the next stage would just be to hear comments from the public.
Madam Mayor?
Mayor?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Madam Mayor, if the Budget Director is prepared to, I would think it would be useful for him to at least hit the high points, or do an overview for the public, so that they understand exactly the budget we're dealing with, in case they missed our first meet.
I agree.
That's fine, that's fine. So, I'll tell you what, let me, if Donna, if you're available, if I could share my screen.
Ready it.
Let's see here. Okay. All right. Again, the total budget, proposed budget for FY21 is a billion, $115.6 million. That's down about 2.9%. But, as I mentioned the other day, that's actually belies some of the impact of the overall numbers from the budget, simply because there's the devil's in the details. And as we walk through this, you're going to see that there are some significant reductions, particularly on the revenue side pertaining to the COVID-19 pandemic. The general fund, proposed $495 million, is down 4.7%. Special revenue funds, it's down only 1.5%, but only, that's because there are a number of new funds that we didn't have in last year's budget, so that's skewing that number. And then also, for instance, in the enterprise funds, at $245.5 million, that looks flat, but behind that number is the fact that airport usually submits its revenues significantly higher than its budget. $193 million in the last fiscal year, this is 20 million higher than the budget itself. In the next FY21, they've reduced that revenue by 20 million, and so the budget and revenues are very close together. So, that's something that gets lost in the overall numbers. But, I would like to, actually, if you want to see some of the revenue impact, particularly in the current fiscal year, you look at the next slide. And what that slide does is show you, looking at the first column, that's actual revenues, the general fund last fiscal year, the original was $529.6 million, derivative estimate was $519.3, and that reflects the fact that we had a strong fourth quarter last year, and we actually started at a point that was lower than the actual revenue base. Now, there was some one-time number, one-time revenues in that column, but we did start on a good starting point. Now, you look ahead, in the third quarter, we were tracking significantly higher than that, or modestly higher than that. It was 529.4, so we were looking to maybe exceed revenues by $10 million this year. And then, COVID-19 hits. So, this, and I'm going to go through just briefly some assumptions in the latter pages here, but what's the estimated impact of COVID-19 that reduces our estimated revenues by $481.8 million? And one of those reduct, and that's a $47 million drop over the revised third-quarter estimate. A portion of that drop is the $19.5 million, which also is an estimate related to the IRS deferral of the 90-day due date in taxes. So, by doing that, that's not particularly a loss of revenue that defers it. So, on a cash basis, that moves your revenue from April or May into July. And for FY21 purposes, what I'm proposing here is that we treat that still as FY20 revenue, even though it comes in July, simply because that would otherwise be pulled out of our balance, and that's not something you'd want to do in these times. So, you can see, given the fact that this year, we were tracking over by 10 million, and the COVID-19 impact was 47 million, that leaves us with a $37.5 million gap or so. How do we address that gap? And that's on the next slide, potential steps to eliminate FY20 deficit. Well, we look at expenditures, trying to hold back on some of that. Personal services, we're tracking through the 19th pay period, about $5 million under. We're also targeting reversions from non-personal accounts of about $4.2 million. And then, we're going to need some steps to reallocate funds that are from this fiscal year, the ground emergency management transfer revenue, we just passed an ordinance, but put that in a special fund, where we'd be trying to reallocate that towards the general revenue, and some of the federal prisoner housing funds as well, that were targeted for improvements in the corrections area and special funds, and that would also reappropriate to general revenue. And then, the other proposal is to reverse some portions of the supplemental capital appropriation, which came from last year's surplus, and that would be to reverse that. We may need to review which ones of those we can actually do. And then, we've got some others that we had fund balances, the ashtray removal program, some of that, projected CNT remaining balance, and some rec center costs that were still remaining in the rec program funds. That's about $19.6 million, and then $19.5 of that, again, is that earnings tax receipts that we won't be receiving until July or so, and we're estimating that we should, again, hold that back to restore any draw on a cash basis in FY20. I also have a question mark on temporary furloughs for city services that are not currently operational. What that pertains to is those things which may not, which are either not open now, or may not open for a seasonal type of service, where we may have to furlough employees related to those services. Going to the next screen, this gives you a highlight pretty much of what the general major special fund revenues. It lays out not only the general fund, which is that top line, but also a lot of our special fund revenues, local use tax, gaming fund, half-cent sales tax, all those special revenues that we get that are particularly hard-hit in this COVID-19 pandemic. The general fund itself, as I just described, we're estimating it down to $481 million. Our base estimate for FY20 would be $495, that's still a 6.5% decline over the based third-quarter revised estimate. And then, you can see the special funds that follow, local use tax, estimated down 10%, the gaming fund, 15.3%, that's not even operational for these next, these last couple months here, and all the 1.8 cent local parks taxes, economic development sales tax, all those sales tax special funds, estimated decline at least 11%. Now, and so you can see the difference there, if our revised estimate was something like $615.4 million, that's a decline of almost $50 million among those special funds. And that's what's in the base budget scenario. Now, given the uncertainty that we're in, we have to also look at what happens if it gets worse. And as I said on Wednesday, and I mean worse, not necessarily worst, because you don't know what the bottom is. And so, that's what the alternate scenario is, where it takes, and it takes some of those assumptions, and brings them down further to where either the recovery is longer, or the reductions are deeper. And you can see, in that scenario, the general fund is down 11.3%, local use tax is down 20%, and you've got all those sales taxes down over 20%. So, that, in total, you would see an additional decline of $31, $39 million, and a total decline of almost $90 million. And I won't go through all these details again, but these next two slides reference the assumptions behind those. Again, on the base proposal scenario, on the left, some of the loss of hospitality wages, and the degree of that, and the degree of recovery, such as it is, and the premise being that it would be a gradual recovery to the end of the calendar year. And the alternate scenario takes that recovery even later, would not be until spring of next year, and that's the difference between the two outlooks. Brings us to the FY21 budget. The proposed drop in revenue creates an estimated starting gap of about $40 million. The, with, starting, what we do each year, is we generally look at this year's budget and say, okay, what's the revenue estimate changes versus what we know to be in potential increases, to come up with what that gap is. The last couple of years, it's been sort of benign, but this year, obviously, is a significant gap. So, if you take the 519.2, which is our original estimate, $10.3 million was our revised increase, but then the COVID-19 impact of a negative almost $50 million there. We do have some recovery in FY21, but still below, well below what our base would have been. And then, you compare that to what our budget was at 519.2 in the current fiscal year, and you identify some increases, decreases, police pay matrices, or whatever our pension cost increases were, and various items there on that page, and as known increases being, meaning that in a normal situation, you would have $535 million as a budget, which there's your $40 million gap. So, the next slide summarizes how we would propose to bridge that gap. There's about $9.9 million in budget cuts, which, with the largest cuts being the Department of Corrections, particularly MSI, which is the medium security institution. We have $22.4 million in revenue reallocations, particularly, and you can see those listed to your right, particularly ward capital at 7.5, recreation capital 0.4, that would be allocated to citywide capital to offset some of the city's overall capital costs, economic development funds, which are either appropriated, or have not been spent over the last couple of years, same thing with, and again, some of those special funds, we recreated on the EMS, GEMT, and the correction special revenue fund, and the public safety sales tax, that was the 2008 crime prevention monies, and the public safety use tax, that was part of the, which had, has a balance from unspent monies before. And then, there was a one-time benefit, the health insurance pharmacy portion, which is self-insured, had a balance that had grown over the years, and we're appropriating 9.8 million of that, of which 7.4 million is related to the general fund. And that's basically how we're proposing to bridge the FY20 base budget gap. And I won't go through all of these details, but you can see that the cuts are scattered. I should point out that one of the items there under non-departmental, we're not budgeting, one of the proposals, as you know, we had a pay plan calling for a 3% merit increase. The plan was to budget additional monies, we typically don't budget for, given that it's less than that every year, but there were no funds added for that increase in this budget, proposed budget. And so, that is a $10 million reduction. Here are, again, the revenues. I won't go again through the details, but it's a decline of 6.5% proposed from the third-quarter revised estimates in the general fund. You can see from the chart there, the earnings tax, again, remains 34%. Actually, I should point out that the earnings tax itself, through the third quarter, was doing well. I mean, it was up by 7.5%, and it was primary, the, one of the generators of that $10 million that we were expecting to exceed revenue estimates. But, again, that was, that's before the COVID-19 impact. The next slide shows what the impact of all those reductions in various departments, the big ones being there, the non-departmental, that 37.4% decline, that's the reallocation monies that we are offsetting some of our capital costs, citywide, and debt costs related to that, and the 16.6% increase in county offices, that's because in the Board of Elections, obviously, we have an election year coming up, and that's for elections, and that is about a $1.2 million increase in their budget. On some of the special funds, again, the local use tax, as I mentioned, it's down 7.2% year-to-date, and it's revised at $34.1 million. Again, and that's a 10% reduction for next year. So, combined, that would be a 17% reduction from overall, from its base. The Affordable Housing Fund is fully allocated at its minimum of $5 million, but as you recall, we had money last year that raised to 6 million, but that addition is not in this year's budget. The Healthcare Trust Fund is fully allocated, it's $5 million. Building demolition has got a reduced allocation of $1 million, and that would be 2 million below its normal allocation. And the other items are the excess use tax portion, you can see, are listed there. Police is down by $700,000, and then, we had a weed program that was funded with the excess use tax funds as well, that is not funded in this proposal. Economic Development Sales Tax, that again, is also allocated by formula through the ordinance, it's estimated drop to $18.5 million next year, which is 11.5% decrease. All those items that you can see there are, some of those reflect both the 10% of the 18.5 plus prior-year unspent balance. And in the city infrastructure piece, that's that reallocation of $3.5 million to help offset some of the general fund's capital costs. Prop P, this is the half-cent public safety sales and use tax portion related to the Prop P sales tax. Again, sales tax revenues, that would also be 18.5 million, which is 11.5% decrease, and the use tax piece would be down 10% from that, from the revised estimate as well. Sales tax portion, you can see the police and fire and circuit attorney, that's all set by ordinance at those percentages. And the, if you recall, last year, we had extra funds for equipment for both police and fire, and that is not available this year, so it only reflects the cost of the pay raises and the pension increase related to those. Under the use tax portion, the after-schools and jobs gets 25% of the use tax. Youth jobs is down $100,000, simply because the revenue is down by that 10%. Circuit Attorney also gets the 7%, 7.7%, and rec programs and such at those percentages listed there, and there are some balances which are also being appropriated. In the capital fund, the capital fund is, you can see a significant reduction at $28.5 million, a decrease of 7.9 million or 22% from the previous fiscal year, and that's primarily because the biggest sources of revenue for the capital fund are either sales taxes, the half-cent, and some of the park sales tax, as well as gaming revenues. And those are some of the hardest-hit revenues there are in this budget. And you can see from the proposal, the ward improvements, it would not get an allocation in this proposal, as well as the recreation center improvements. Total personnel changes, overall in all funds, were down 93 positions, most of which are in the general fund, and the 89 down the general fund. Most of that is also in Department of Corrections, which is down 88 positions. Police, there's been some shifting, because some grants expired on the funding for officers, and so the police uniforms are up on the general fund side, but down on the grant side. And then, there's some reductions in civilian positions and offsetting that. And the special funds category, that includes the transport unit that was created from corrections, that is in that special fund that they have there. Grants is also down, enterprises is only down by two. And this is just a chart showing you what that has been over the last 10 years. Overall, we're still down 340 positions in all funds since FY11. Historical pension costs, we track this pretty closely, simply because it has such implications going forward in terms of years ahead. Total pension cost, $83.1 million, that's a $1.9 million increase from last year. ERS is up 1.6 million, FRS and FRP, that's the two pension program, or pension funds there, is up by just under a million. And PRS was actually down 600,000, as they were calculating their actuarial benefits last year. But, if you look at this next slide, this sort of gives you an indication of where they are in funded status, each of the four systems, as well as what we can, sort of gives you a little early indication of what the cost may be going forward. If you look at this, we have, most of our plans are close to 80%, but historically, if you're coming off an 11-year expansion, you should, the last time we were at this point in the 90s, we were over 100% funded. So, and just so you, just, I'd like to add also that pension plans, the contributions are set as the plan year ended last September. So, none of these numbers reflect anything that has occurred since then. So, any impact from the COVID-19 pandemic, with the market swings and such, would be reflected in this coming valuation, which would be ending September 30. Now, it is smooth over a number of years, so it does mitigate the impact somewhat. But, if you look at the difference between the actuarial basis and market basis of those two funds, you can see what, by that number of market basis, which is more immediate, and it's lower than the actuarial basis, it means there are some losses in there which have not yet been recognized. And we can expect that to be, cause increases in the coming years for contributions, and that's before the COVID-19 impact. Next slide, on the reserve general fund balances. We'd made significant progress over the last couple of years in building this up. Our minimum target had always been a minimum of 5%, and we exceeded that last year. We were on, well on our way to getting towards that 10% target rate, and then this, we were hit now pretty severely in this fourth quarter. The idea here is that we're trying to mitigate any potential gap this fiscal year, and that requires some significant actions. The reason why I have two numbers there on FY21, that reflects the difference, because if the 19.5 million estimated is deferred until July with those earnings tax receipts, then it would bring down our balance by that amount. But, again, we should be planning that any deferred receipts that are actually, by all intents and purposes, FY20 revenues, they should be restored to the fund balance, which would bring it back up. And as I mentioned, this is a proposal based on a base revenue scenario assumption. There is a worst scenario assumption as well, and again, I don't, I say worst, not worst, because we don't know. But, what are the kinds of things that we need to look at if that worst scenario presents itself, and that was a $40 million difference? So, here are some of the cuts that would be potential for a $40 million gap, and that's got pretty much everything on it that we can think of. And I'm sure there's going to be some that would, that we need to add, and others might say, hey, delete others. But, I guess the important point to make in this is that we need to be prepared. There's a lot of uncertainty with revenues right now, and we need to be in a position to where we can respond to whatever outcome results. And that's just a summary of the change in the other budget, and I'll just drop down to that final bullet point, where, again, the economic outlook remains very uncertain, and we just need to be prepared to address whatever things might be coming forward, and so that's where we stand.
Thank you, Paul. Really appreciate that presentation, appreciate your incredibly hard work on this budget this year. As I said at Wednesday's meeting, I'm sure this is the worst, worst experience you've had in terms of preparing the budget, and we really do appreciate your, all your help and your good analysis on this. So, with that, is there, I know there are some comments from the public. Stephanie, do you want to read those comments, or perhaps President Reed or Comptroller Green might have something to say first, if you do?
Madam Mayor, it appears that some of the, a couple of the attendees have their hands up, hands raised to speak. I saw Mark Levinson and a few others out there that had their hands up, hands raised to speak.
Yes, President Reed, we were going to read the comments that came in prior to the meeting first, and then, we would take those ones that raised their hands in the order that they did.
Okay.
Unless you prefer to do something different.
No, that's fine. I didn't know that that's what you guys had set up. I'm good with that.
Thank you, Stephanie.
So, I can start back. There were three comments on the meeting on Wednesday, when we had the Q&amp;A setup. I'll just comment on those, they actually are on the same subject. One from Evan Lehman, regain $16 million by closing the workhouse. Another comment by Alec, closing the workhouse will save millions of dollars and ensure that people do not have to live in those awful conditions ever, let alone during these scary times. And then, a comment from Caroline, why are we spending $16 million a year to keep the workhouse open with only 112 detainees? This money would be much better spent on things that will help keep people out of jail, such as housing, substance use programs, and services for homeless people. And she said, thank you, I can't join, but please share my comments with the board. And we also have a series of comments, starting with Dana Gray. This comment is from Representative Renew Missouri, the National Housing Trust, Natural Resources Defense Council, Elevate Energy, Dana Gray of Tower Grove Neighborhoods CDC, Sarah Ausley Townsend in Power, Missouri, and Becky Reinhardt of DeSalle's Community Development. And I don't see a representative from them online right now, so I'll read their comment. To state and local leaders, the organization signed on below, urge state and local officials to prioritize the use of CDBG funds to provide rental assistance to ensure that impacted families can remain stably housed during and after the COVID-19 crisis. This letter has been shared with state and local decision-makers responsible for the allocation and dispersment of CDBG funds. On April 8th, 2020, the federal government began releasing community development block grant funds provided by the Federal Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security, the CARES Act. CDBG funds are provided to both state governments and directly to some local governments to be used to improve housing, living environments, and economic opportunities, principally for persons with lower and moderate incomes. State and local officials should prioritize the use of CDBG funds to provide rental assistance to ensure that impacted families can remain stably housed during and after the COVID-19 crisis. Renters need immediate relief for rent payments amid the COVID-19 crisis. Renters have lower incomes and savings, and have greater difficulty in paying for their housing costs, making them particularly vulnerable to economic shocks. Lower-income households are particularly challenged during this crisis and should receive priority. According to the National Multifamily Housing Council, nearly one-third of renters are unable to pay their rent in April. The National Low-Income Housing Coalition estimates that renters were able to, unable to pay their rent in April. The National Low-Income Housing Coalition estimates that the number of extremely and very low-income renters who pay more than 50% of their income on rent will increase by nearly 20% as a result of the COVID-19 economic crisis. Using the CDBG funds to create new or supplemental existing rental assistance will have multiple benefits, and they list the benefits, rental assistance is necessary complement to eviction moratoriums. And they list the benefits, rental assistance is necessary complement to eviction moratoriums. Those moratoriums do eliminate the obligation to pay rent unless relief is provided. Renters who are impacted by the economic downturn and unable to pay rent back rents risk being evicted when the moratorium expire. Rental assistance also helps to ensure that rental housing owners can continue to operate their buildings safely. Many affordable rental units are in buildings that do not generate enough operating revenue to withstand a sudden loss of income. Deferred maintenance could put renters at risk and lead to a loss of much needed affordable housing. Rental assistance will benefit the local economy. Providing relief to renters will help them stretch their limited income so they can afford their essential household needs, helping builder, building owners to maintain their properties, allow them to continue to employ their staff and purchase local goods and services. And lastly, rental assistance will protect renters in need who do not currently receive federal rental subsidies. Only 25% of renters who are in need of rental assistance currently receive it through federal housing programs. Tens of millions of renters living in naturally occurring affordable housing do not currently benefit from any rent subsidies. More than 16 million Americans filed for unemployment over the past three weeks. At a time when Americans are being ordered to stay home, a person's immediate and devastating loss of income cannot be allowed to increase their risk of displacement. Rental assistance to families and individuals is needed now. And they ask that you reconsider any cuts to that particular funding. Comment from Chris Wilcox. My name is Chris Wilcox, and I am a part of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Coalition. Thank you for taking this time to read my correspondence. Given the upcoming hearing for the Board of Estiment and Apportionment scheduled for April 24th, I would like to submit a written public comment. I humbly request the following statement to be submitted to public, to the public record. To the members of the board, my name is Chris Wilcox, and I am from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Coalition. Thank you for taking the time to listen to what I have to say concerning the fiscal year 2021 budget for the city of St. Louis. I would like to express our coalition's position that the Affordable Housing Trust Fund should receive the $6.6 million it was allocated last year and voice our concern about the reduction in funding in the proposed budget. We have been pleased to see increases in the trust fund over the last two years after it had been underfunded for years before. I have acknowledged that lost revenues as a result of the crisis of COVID-19 and the strain on city resources present some difficult choices for this year's budget. However, the public health needs for the most vulnerable are all the more urgent. And the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is the most flexible and effective tool to address these issues. The proposed 24% reduction in the trust fund is disproportionate compared the expected, than the expected 10% loss in revenue from the use tax it draws from. Further, our coalition strongly believes that under no circumstances should the trust fund be allocated less than $5 million minimum required by its enabling ordinance. That minimum funding level was a promise to the voters who established the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. It is evident ever that housing is healthcare. The threat of people losing the housing is all the more catastrophic for low-income families who risk exposing themselves to a deadly virus. Already, many in our community shoulder significant financial burdens to maintain their housing even before many of them lost their income as a consequence of COVID-19. The risk is all the more serious for the unhoused, who need our support more than ever for shelter and basic needs. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund is primary, is, is the primary means by which the city provides vital services to the unhoused, and a threat to our most vulnerable is a threat to all of all if we fail to provide safe shelter that can mitigate the spread of COVID-19. While I understand that resources are scarce, I ask that the city not have the services necessary for people to assess access, safe shelter during a pandemic, bear the brunt of cuts in the budget. Thank you for taking the time to listen to my perspective and for your service to the city of St. Louis. Comment from Jenna Hampton, also about the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I would like to submit a written testimony regarding the proposed budget for the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund to be shared with the Board of E and A. We need to help keep AHTF funded at 6.6 million. I'm a current graduate student at Washington U, focusing on affordable housing policy. Also, as a St. Louis city resident, as someone who is well aware of the extreme lack of funding options for affordable housing, I am very concerned about the proposed cuts to AHTF. Right now, especially during the COVID-19 crisis, we need the vital source of flexible funds that can be used to respond to housing needs. We know that as a result of the virus and the economic recession, there will be more people becoming homeless, more people at risk of losing their homes, and less affordable units available to the public. I understand that our budgets are limited and spread thin, but now is not the time to cut funding for affordable housing. Housing is healthcare. For the sake of the health and well-being of our city, I urge you to keep the AHTF funded at its current level. Comment from Joshua Lawrence. Hello, my name is Joshua Lawrence, and I am a resident of Dutch Town. I am writing today to advocate for the full funding of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. As COVID-19 ravages throughout our city, we desperately need eviction prevention, services for the unhoused, home repair, tenant organizing, rent, mortgage utility support, and other services to ensure people have a safe place to stay. Whether they rent or they own, those who are feeling the economic impacts of the pandemic are going to be needing this, and it should be St. Louis's top priority. At $5 million, we aren't even fully funded. We are only at the legal minimum. We cannot and should not have a contingency plan of anything below that. Thank you for your time. From Mary Jo Harkins. My name is Mary Jo Harkins, and I'm a resident of Dutch Town. I am writing to advocate for the full funding of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. As COVID-19 ravages throughout our city, we desperately need eviction prevention, services for the unhoused, home repair, tenant organizing, rent, mortgage, utility support, and other services to ensure people have a safe place to live. Whether they rent or they own, those who are feeling the economic impacts of the pandemic are going to be needing this, and it should be St. Louis's top priority. She echoes a lot of Joshua's same concerns. We cannot and should not have a contingency plan of anything below that. Thank you for your time. Clyde Crumpton. Please see the attached letter, which I'll read, regarding the AHTF as well. It's from Pope Brilliant Presbyterian Church. Reverend Clyde R. Crumpton, pastor. I am writing in support of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to assure the fund's current level of funding is maintained through the next fiscal year. As a community-active congregation, Pope Brilliant collaborates with other nonprofit organizations to support families, youth, and young adults, senior citizens, senior citizens, and our homeless. The AHTF provides funding crucial to the services, programs, and activities that are made available to the citizens of our great city. Organizations with which we collaborate include Rebuilding Together St. Louis, which provides vital home repairs for senior, veteran, and disabled homeowners, essential to their independent living, better family life that offers comprehensive family services, including educational programs and financial literacy counseling. The St. Louis Urban League that provides exigent preventative homeless services. Community Women Against Hardship indispensable to many women of our city with resources that assist with socioeconomic challenges of life. And Heat Up St. Louis, which speaks for itself with supplemental utility funding for residents of St. Louis during unsafe cooling and heating periods. There are just a few of the many nonprofit organizations that receive funding from the AHTF, which benefits citizens of St. Louis with requisite assistance in their time of need. During a time such as this with COVID-19 in the environment, services provided with the assistance of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund are needed more than ever. Thank you for doing all that you can to maintain the current funding for the next year. Your leadership is of the most, the utmost importance to the St. Louis community. Please continue to stay safe and well, and the peace and love of God. Clyde Crumpton, pastor. And there were a few that I do see online. There were a couple more that I received this morning. To Mayor Cruzon and Louis Reed, the current plan to cut 24% from the Affordable Housing Trust is unconscionable. Adequate housing and housing support is the prime resource for getting people out of poverty. The need for this assistance will only increase in the coming year. If you cannot increase the support the next, the next year, I, I at least keep the support at its current level. From Lois Yatch Tech. From Father Gerald J. Kleba. This is addressed to Comptroller Green. As a resident of St. Louis for my entire 78 years, and as a socially concerned Catholic priest for 53 years, I urge you to maintain the present level of support rather than the proposed 24% cut in the affordable housing allocation of the city budget. The poor are poorer than the rest of us already, so we cannot try to balance the budget on their backs in these trying times. Thank you and God bless for your service. I was born and raised in Dutch Town, served in North St. Louis, the Ville, and the housing projects, Von, and retired after 16 years of serving St. Cronan's on Boyle and Manchester. I now live in Shaw. Peace and joy as Eastern New Life continues for all of us. Molly Metzger. Please do not cut the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. The stability of a decent, affordable home is critical to flattening the curve and lowering the tragic rate of violent crime in our city. Cutting affordable housing would threaten the health and safety of all St. Louisans. To the members of the board, my name is Tara Abacon, and I am opposed to the reduction of funds for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund in the city of St. Louis, proposed FY 2021 budget. When we provide resources to keep people safely sheltered and in their homes, we are preventing hospital visits and preventing root causes of health problems. Community need is already high. After the eviction moratorium ends, the demand for homeless and vacancy prevention services that includes rent, utility assistance, home repair, et cetera, will be higher than ever. The AHTF funds these services. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund cuts are disproportionate. The use tax revenues that fund this source are projected to increase by 10%, but cuts to the AHTF are 24%. This fund is vital before, was vital before COVID-19, is vital during COVID-19, and will be vital after COVID-19. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund is a flexible and necessary source of funds that can respond quickly to community need and provide services fast. As such, I strongly urge you to maintain the currently, number one, maintain the current level of funding for the AHTF at 6.6 million. We can't accept a 24% cut in services. And number two, the AHTF should never be funded below the mandated minimum of 5 million. Thank you for all that you are doing for the city right now, and I appreciate your time in taking public comment on the proposed city budget. And those are the written comments of those that ask for theirs to be written, to be read. There are also a few people such as, he's still there, Gary Newcomer. Gary Newcomer, is he still on? I'll read his comment. I don't see Mr. Newcomer.
He just, he just raised his hand at the bottom of the list.
Okay. Is he there?
Yes.
I have a written comment, Stephanie, I don't know if you read the comment from Abby Buckhouse.
Abby Buckhouse was going to, I think she's online, but go ahead, Ms., go ahead, Comptroller Green.
It's send in a written letter.
Yes.
And her letter actually is in support of maintaining the funding for the affordable housing. I'll read her comments in part. My name is Abby Buckhouse, and I manage policy and advocacy for Generate Health. We are a nonprofit working to eliminate racial disparities in infant and maternal, and maternal health. First, I would like to thank you all for your leadership. This certainly wasn't in the job description for any of us, and you have all continued to push forward in light of this global price crisis. A member of our community leader cabinet posed a question that has stuck with me. Mia asked, what does over look like? Mia shares this question and consistently on the forefront of her mind as she moves throughout her day working, homeschooling her daughter, trying to keep her family safe and healthy. Right now, we are deciding what over looks like. Every single decision we make in this budget holds more weight than it ever has. This world will never look the same, and the decisions you make with this budget determine what the world will look like and who is living in it. By cutting funds from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund that helps to provide safe and stable housing even more critical during a health crisis, you are telling communities that their lives are not worth the cost. Safe and stable housing has a direct impact on our overall health and well-being. So let's make it a priority. I know we don't have endless dollars, and I know allocating those dollars is not easy. I also know that where you put the money tells us exactly what is important to you. Prioritizing communities most impacted by this crisis. Prioritize moms who need somewhere safe to put their babies to sleep. Prioritize Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Generate Health strongly urges you to maintain the current level of funding at 6.6 million, and under no circumstance reduce funding to be less than the mandated minimum of $5 million. Thank you, Abby Buckhouse, manager of policy and advocacy. And that is the full comment from Abby Buckhouse.
Thank you, Comptroller Green. There were some other written, what, but those persons that did send in written comment wanted to do theirs verbally, and most of them are on. So we, we can start with Mr. Newcomer.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Cruzon, President Reed, and Comptroller Green. Thank you again for everything that you've been doing. I know that no one signed up for this, and it's a, it's a lot that's going on, and we really appreciate everything that you've been doing during this time. My name is Gary Newcomer. I serve as the Director of Operations for the Community Builders Network of Metro St. Louis. I know many of you already know this, but CBN is a coalition of over 70 community building organizations in the St. Louis region. These are mostly community-based nonprofits, but also lenders, private developers, philanthropic organizations, government actors, and others. We exist to support and build bridges among the St. Louis community and those who serve them. Even after a single day yesterday afternoon, we've already heard from over a dozen of our member organizations who are very concerned about the proposed cut to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And as such, we're also strongly opposed to this cut for a variety of reasons. The first being that housing is healthcare. When we provide resources that keep people safe in their homes or get them into new affordable or accessible homes, we're preventing hospital visits during this critical time. We've also seen that the Affordable Housing Trust Fund cuts are disproportionate to the budget. So while the use tax is projected to decrease by 10%, the cuts to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund are expected to be about 24%. We've also heard that the need is going to skyrocket after the eviction moratorium ends. All of our members have said that they expect the demand for homeless prevention services to be an extreme demand, and will continue into next year. Those are programs that the Affordable Housing Trust Fund funds. And then finally, our members just see this as essential for coronavirus response. The programs and services made possible by the Affordable Housing Trust Fund this spring helped helped keep countless families safe in their homes during the height of the pandemic, which is still continuing. There's a big fear that if this outbreak and these, or if these services are gone, and there's another second outbreak next, next winter, our city is going to be at a much higher risk of rapid transmission. So because of that, CBN is strongly urging you to maintain the current level of funding for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund at 6.6 million, and under no circumstances ever reduce or even propose to reduce the funding to be less than the mandated minimum of 5 million. So thank you again for everything that you're doing during these hard times.
Next, we'll have Mike Ziegler.
Can you all hear me? Okay, I'm going to start speaking. Can you all hear me?
Yes, yes, we can hear you, Mike.
Great, thank you. Thank you for just listening to your community through the difficult times. I'm going to offer a dislocation of three comments that we.
Hey, Mike, 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 you're breaking up a lot. I don't know if you're on a phone, whatever, but you're breaking up a lot. We can, we're getting every.
Okay, can you hear me all now?
Yes, that's better.
All right, try it. It's bad. I can go off. Hills Community Development, I'm offering express ID concern over the reduced 2021 budget for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund which is a drastically disproportionate cut. This drastic cut would be a huge step back for the city's efforts to address homelessness and housing insecurity in the city of St. Louis. To sales who has fortunate receive a housing trust fund in 2020, a new eviction prevention program, Here to Stay. Funding allows residents who are at risk of eviction to connect to in-depth financial coaching and support from a social network in order to get back on track with rent and stability. I'm here a couple statements from current. In support of the eviction program by, and the essential impact of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. The first state, I am a 41-year-old, single mother of four who had fallen behind because of a loss of income due to a health issue. When I fell behind, I contacted the case manager for the program. Our first meeting wasn't like anything I've ever experienced. He took interest in my health issues that be into the bind that I am in. He was interested in my personal growth financially and the personal growth of my children, and provided resources that would help in other ways, such as scholarships. Programs like Here to Stay should be offered to tenants of the city. I wholeheartedly believe that it would cut down on the issue that St. Louis has with homelessness and create less stress in families' fall months. And the second statement, here statement is an excellent program. The program helped me in so many ways, especially management. Able to be in this program also helped me so many how budget goal and how to stay on track. Be funded for people who are in a city. And these are just testimony in the first of the program. And then here's few moratorium additions lifted, a huge number of rest will emerge with significant rental debt and then a risk of. I was not able to decrease these funds. On behalf of the sales and all the families served, we request that you ensure the Affordable Housing Trust Fund was full funding for 21 at the amount 6.6 million, and that under no circumstances should the Affordable Housing Trust be funded below the mandated minimum of 5 million. It is essential for the health and safety of our city. Thank you for listening and thank you for your service.
Thank you for your comments, Mike.
Next is M. Levisson, M. Levisson.
Yeah. I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yes. I guess we don't get video here, so you can't see us, but I can see you. You all look great. It's good to see you, and thanks for this quick opportunity to speak about the Airport Taxi Consortium. They've been contracting with the city for over 10 years now. There used to be, I think, about 250 of them. After the rideshares came in, their work has been reduced. They're down to about 184. They were running about four or five trips a day prior to the pandemic. The pandemic hit, they are down to one or two trips a day. Hours for prep, and then, of course, it could end up. Because of this, they pay a $4 per trip fee, a dollar to the MTC and $3 to the city, and additional $246 per driver for the opportunity most favored nation.
Mark, you're breaking up on us. If you could.
You may want to take it off speaker and just talk directly into, if you're calling in by phone or whatever, or get closer to your mic on your computer because you're breaking up. We can't hear anything you're saying at the current.
All right.
There we go. That's better. Yes. Stay close so we.
Okay.
Cut off about, right as you started to talk about the $246 a month, that's where I lost you.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate that. To me either, but. So they pay $246 per month.
Hey, Mark, you're still going in and out. You stay, you know, closer to your mic and kind of stay there. You're fading in and out every time you move, I think.
All right, I'm going to try not to move at all. Can you hear me now? All right, you can't hear me, I think.
Yes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Mark, we can hear you. You're not, you're choppy, but we can hear you. So just, I don't know, stay close to the window or close to your mic or something.
I wonder if I called in by phone or something, if it would be better. Maybe I should do that, and you all could. I yell first while I try to call in by phone. Does that make any sense?
That's, that's good. I think maybe that might help. You agree, President?
Absolutely.
I see you shaking your head.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
All right, bye, Mark. We'll talk to you later.
Yeah, just call in.
Okay. All right.
And there's a written comment from Nate Lindsay in the Q and A. Given the racial inequality COVID-19 has highlighted in our city, do the proposed budget changes reflect a prioritization of racial equality equity to alleviate those inequalities? If so, please provide an example of how racial equity played a role in particular line item decisions. And that's a question for any member of the board.
Madam Mayor, if you would, I would, since we have, you know, we seem to have a fair amount of written questions. I think we should read those into the record at the end of this meeting before we adjourn, but give the people who are sitting out here with their hands raised for an extended amount of time an opportunity to speak, otherwise we may lose them. They may not be able to speak because they may have to leave, so.
I agree with that, Mr. President. I think, I hope you don't literally have to have your hand up like this for so long, but I, I agree with that. And we have read most of the early written comments that we got into the record already. So if it is agreeable with everyone, I would just ask Stephanie to call on people. Absolutely. The next person on the list is Glenn Burley.
Hi, Glenn.
He disappeared.
Hello?
Glenn, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. So I'm, you know, mainly just going to echo a lot of what's been said before by various people around the Affordable Housing Trust Fund on behalf of E-Hoc. We're also a part of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Coalition with many of the other people that have spoken today and submitted letters. And one thing I did want to kind of point out, though, was, you know, the 6.6, I believe it was, million wasn't sufficient before. We, the Coalition had actually been pushing for 10 million this year. Now, obviously, with all the budget stuff around the virus, we, you know, that's not going to happen for understandable reasons. But we did want to echo other people's point of keeping this money there because all of the things that the Affordable Housing Trust Fund can be used for with this very flexible locally raised money are things that are going to become more necessary, not less necessary in the face of the virus. That's all I had to say. Like I said, so many other people have spoken eloquently on this issue. I'm not going to take up a ton of folks' time. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. You know, if I could just say, I know there are a lot of speakers on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I want to just say that I support the sentiment that we want to put as much possible, money as possible into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And we certainly tied, sort of together with that are the rental assistance. And we are absolutely looking at some of the federal funds that we will be getting in order to supplement both of those things. They, they are related in, in my mind. And we're also working with the St. Louis Housing Authority on this and a number of people. We, we really recognize that housing is a public health issue and that more and more people, more people needed housing before, and now more and more people need housing. So I absolutely share that sentiment, and we're going to work as hard as possible in order to get people into housing. And so I don't want to cut anyone off here, but in case you're still trying to persuade us, I'll just, I'm just speaking for myself here. So, thank you, Glenn.
I would like to, excuse me, Mr. President, I would like to weigh in on the affordable housing issue and say that I agree with the mayor. I think that that is an issue that we need to be looking hard at to maintain is full funding for this year, even though we have this horrible crisis. But of course, this crisis that we have on a larger scale hits people's home on a smaller scale. So they need all the relief that we can support. So, Madam Mayor, if you are speaking about fully funding the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, I am in agreement with that. I just wanted you to know that.
All right, I'm in complete, absolute agreement with that. You know, we need the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to be fully funded this year more than any. When you think about the struggles that a lot of the families around the city will have, you know, with, with, you know, rental assistance and just, you know, daily expenses. There's a lot of pressure on a lot of families. And unfortunately, the people that are at the bottom of the payroll are the first people that are let go and the first people that are, you know, furloughed and laid off, right? So, you know, I'm in complete agreement that we need to fully fund it. I was happy last year when we were able to add more money and like a lot of, some of the, some of the people who have sent in comments and some of the people commenting today. You know, my hopes was that we would be able to add even more this year. But, you know, but the other thing I want people to understand is that when this budget leaves the Board of E and A, it goes over to the Board of Alderman, and that's where a lot of the real work begins in terms of, you know, restructuring the budget as much as possible, right? Within our financial means and making some, some significant changes to come back to the Board of E and A. So the budget isn't done yet, and, but your comments obviously help, and I appreciate all the time that each and every one of you have put in in bringing forth such thoughtful comments. Thank you.
Next, we have Karis. Karis recognized as Carissa on the, with her hand up. And then we'll have on deck John Chasenoff.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, thank you. I am, my name is Carissa. I want to say thank you to Mayor Cruzon, President Reed, and Comptroller Green for all the hard work you've done for us during these turbulent, turbulent times. I'm also here to speak about fully funding the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Listening to the three of you, I would just like to thank you for your support. And if you, if all three of you agree that this needs to be fully funded, when you send it to the Board of Alderman, are you going to tell them that they need to fully fund it or that this is a priority? Because if you're sending it to them with, already with a budget cut, I feel like the message they're receiving is that this is not a priority to the three of you. So my question would be, will you all make this the priority when you send it to them?
I would vote that we would send the budget over with this fully funded. That would be my goal. We do have one meeting prior to going, this going over to the Board of Alderman. So, Madam Mayor, if we can get our heads together and get around this issue that is so important to our community, I would certainly recommend that this be fully funded prior to going to the Board of Alderman.
Thank you for that. Sorry, I was on mute.
Thank you.
Next up, Stephanie. John Chasenoff, and then on deck, we will have Sarah Nixon.
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. I appreciate you being here, and I appreciate the staff who, you know, have worked so hard to set up this type of video conferencing for us today. A little bit of technological feedback, I wanted to let you know that there was an incorrect link posted for this meeting. And so some folks who might have wanted to, and then it was corrected, I guess, towards, right before the meeting. But there might be some people who wanted to join and couldn't. And I wondered if it's possible to send in written testimony after this meeting that could get put into the record as well. And if you can let us know how to send in written testimony, that would be a huge help. But as to my remarks, I know that the, you have a list that's essentially brainstorming ideas for what to do if things are worse than expected. But one of the items on that list is cure violence, and I wanted to speak to that. We are in the process now, I'm serving on the advisory committee that's working with the Health Department and with employment connections to do hiring, first off, in the Wells Good fellow neighborhood. And we're currently in the process of working on that hiring. It's been especially difficult to reach out to the community and find those hires. The special nature of cure violence hires is that we need good communication with community, and the technological problems of the stay-at-home order have made that difficult. But I think we will have an added burden if cure violence is on the list for possible cuts in year two and three. We, last thing we want is the word to go out on the street that this is a temporary hire. I think we'll lose a lot of good people if that happens. And so I would urge you to take that off the list of considerations for, even for the worst-case scenario. That, I think that's really going to hurt us. I'm already getting feedback, oh, cure violence has been cut, that kind of thing. The second thing I wanted to say is that I understand that this is an austerity budget that we're working on right now, but it's also a recession budget. We're heading into very hard times for lots of folks, and I hope that. And I hope that you all and the Board of Alders can readjust their thinking about priorities as we head into a very serious recession and what the human needs are. To that end, I think it's great that you all are cutting the budget for the workhouse. There's only evidently 112, 113 people in there now. But with that few people, to me, it only makes sense to go ahead and close the workhouse. I think that would save an additional, something like eight or nine million dollars, which could be much better put, put to much better use at this point. The other thing, as we're resetting priorities, I think that the Police Department budget has long been something of a sacred cow. And it is a huge part of the budget. I think that there needs to be a real deep analysis of the Police Department budget and find out where there's fat in that budget. I hear from Alders, from police, from all sorts of folks that there are too many white shirts, not enough actual officers on the street. That needs to be seriously looked at. The Real-Time Intelligence Center soaks up millions and millions of dollars. And we've been able to get statistics to show that that's really efficacious and, you know, worth the budget expense for the Real-Time Intelligence Center. Shot Spotter is nationally known as an ineffective program that we still spend money on here in St. Louis. And I'm not sure why that is. The SWAT unit, we did a study of SWAT and found out that less than 1% of their deployments are for the things that SWAT's advertised for, like active shooters and hostage situations, less than 1% of their deployments. And so we think there are places in the Police Department budget that need to get a serious look. And this leads me to my next point, which is about the Sunshine Law and Transparency around the budget. It's very hard for us to get information, for instance, what is the SWAT budget? How much are we spending on the Real-Time Intelligence Center? Because the line items that we get published are, you know, more like 30,000 feet. And it, we can't dig into those particular line items with any easiness. So I would urge you all to put more specific budgets online and to work harder to get compliance with the Sunshine Law. I know, just as an example, I have a request to the Police Department for, actually, no, it's to the Board of Public Service for a Sunshine Request that I put in in January and it's, and I'm still have no, I don't even have a timeline for when they're going to fill that. So given these budget cuts and the need for community input, I think we really need to make sure the Sunshine Law is functioning for us through this period. And the last point I want to make is to bolster this idea of community input. I think it would be a great time to institute a citizen committee that could advise you all on budget reallocations and budget cuts. If it's going to be, you know, these are difficult choices. And I think the more we get community input on that, the better choices will be made and the more community you'll support that you all will have for these hard choices. So those were my comments for today. Again, if, just as a reminder, if you all could let us know how to write in written comments and whether it's too late to do that for this, to add on to this meeting's record, I appreciate that very much. Thanks.
Mr. Chasnov, do you have access to the city website on the Board of Estimate and Apportment page? You can submit via email. At the bottom, you can submit it via email.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Nixon?
Hello?
Hi Sarah, we can hear you.
Okay, um, so to begin with, I'd like to echo a lot of what John Chasnov said, especially in regards to greater transparency of specific department budgets. In reviewing the proposed FY 2021 operating, annual operating plan, I would often come across line items that I wasn't even really sure how to dig into because I wasn't, you know, aware of the contents of it. So even if I had a question, I couldn't, you know, sort of further interrogate that because I didn't know what was being allocated towards what. So sort of as a result of that, a lot of my questions are like specific budget-related questions. For Paul Payne, so beginning on slide eight, the preliminary budget balance is stated as $39.7 million. I'm not sure how you arrived at that figure. If the budget balance is the FY 2021 estimated revenue subtracted from the FY 2021 base budget. If that were the case, I would think that the difference would be 39.6 million, not 39.7 million.
That illustration on that slide reflects the, the attempt to identify what our potential gap is. When you identify both the adjustments in revenue and adjustments in expenditures, yeah. Now, again, those are all rounded to the, to the tenth of a million in terms of the numbers there. But what that does, and we do that each year, is just sort of give you an illustration of what potential gap we are looking at. And last year, as I mentioned, it was somewhat benign, but given this year, 39.7 million, that's a significant number.
Yeah, that all makes sense to me. I guess all I'm saying is 49, or $495 million subtracted from, I think it was 534.6. My, my math just said .6 instead of .7.
Yeah, that's, it's, it's rounded. If, all those are, if you carried out further decimals, you'd see it there, but that's, that's just rounding.
Oh, okay. Um, so on to slide nine. I was wondering if I could get a little more clarification on where special fund revenue reappropriations come from? Yeah, so within the special funds section of the cuts within the Department of Corrections and EMS, GEMT, those are cuts being made? I, I guess, yeah, I don't, I don't understand a lot of what's happening there.
Okay, and, and I can address that. Those are two, special funds are basically, you, we have a revenue source that by ordinance is directed to a special purpose. So it's separate from general revenue. So in the EMS GEMT, that's the Ground Emergency Management Transport Program. That's, that's a, last year, that actually, that's a program that actually, we entered into with the state that reimburses the fire department's EMS division for unreimbursed transports that it does for medical emergencies. Last year, that went directly into the general revenue. This year, there was an ordinance that actually directed that to a special fund that would not only pay for the program itself, there is a, the city contributes an amount and then we get back a larger amount. But it would also be for potentially buying fire equipment and such. Well, what this is proposing is that rather than apply it towards equipment, it is, gets proposed to be absorbing some of our general fund cost as a way to bridge the gap. Similarly, on the Corrections Fund, that is the federal reimbursement that we are getting from the US Marshal for housing at the City Justice Center. The current ordinance provides 30% of that to general revenue and 70% to the general, to this special fund, which also was originally targeted for facility improvements and things like that. Likewise, to the GEMT Fund, this, this proposal was take those unspent monies to date and, and monies that are going to be coming up next year and just apply that toward offsetting some of our general operating fund costs. And so that's why it's termed a reallocation.
All right. Hey, Sarah, we're allocating three minutes for each speaker. If you have detailed questions like that for the Budget Director, if you'd like to submit those in writing and then the Budget, we can have the Budget Director send you a response. Because we're getting way over your time at this point and we have a bunch of speakers still waiting to speak.
Okay, could I maybe ask?
If you have any additional questions for the, for anyone, because you're, you're over your time, I would recommend you submit them. If you have any more comments right now, you could, you, you're free to make those comments.
Okay, I guess my final sort of question comment is just, like, I'm in support of closing the workhouse. Like, you know, by measures of defunding. But I'm concerned about the, like, potential material consequences of, for example, the deductions from the federal prisoner housing funds. If the Board of Aldermen, for example, are not considering decarcerating individuals currently housed in the CGC and MSI. Because then that just leaves you in a situation where you don't have money, but you still have people. And that feels like a discrepancy that I would like addressed.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Sarah.
Next we have Elaine Powers and then Jerry Connolly.
Good morning.
Good morning, we can hear you.
Okay, great, thank you. And I appreciate each of your prior comments in support of funding for, for Affordable Housing Trust Fund. My name is Elaine Powers and I serve as Executive Director of Rebuilding Together St. Louis. We are a local nonprofit agency focused on providing free home repair services to low-income homeowners, especially older adults, veterans, and individuals with disabilities. I appreciate the opportunity to offer these comments in regard to the proposed reduction in funding for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Annually, through funding from AHTF, we're able to provide critical home repairs for 20 to 25 city residents who are living in unsafe and unhealthy homes. These homeowners want to stay in their homes, but challenges such as leaking roofs, broken windows, broken plumbing and HVAC systems, electrical issues often make their homes unsafe. We also address issues such as lack of accessibility inside and outside the homes. Can you imagine not being able to safely leave your home due to broken steps? Or having to stay upstairs all day just to have access to your only working toilet? When we are able to fix these issues, we not only help to restore hope to older city residents, but we help to prevent falls and hospital visits. We help to prevent additional vacancies and we help to prevent homelessness. I strongly urge you to maintain the current level of funding for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund at $6 million and under no circumstance reduce the funding to less than the legally mandated minimum of $5 million. The work done by Rebuilding Together and our nonprofit peers to provide affordable and safe housing in the city should remain among the highest priorities. Right now, our citizens are being asked to stay home. We believe that every homeowner deserves the right to stay home in a place that is safe and healthy. Thank you.
Elaine, thank you for that comment. How much do you get, how much does Rebuilding Together get from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund?
Our allocation for this year is $100,000.
Okay, thank you.
Jerry Connolly. And then we'll have Amanda Lans Ramrup.
Jerry, are you there?
Yeah, I just unmuted myself. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, we can hear you fine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Kruse and President Reed, Comptroller Green, thank you very much for the opportunity for the public to give testimony today. I, in terms of just touching on a transparency comment that Mr. Chasnov made earlier, I think the engagement you've seen from the public today, you know, part of it's facilitated by having clear information and I very appreciate the Budget Director, you know, uploading all the documents very promptly on Wednesday afternoon after the presentation. So it does give people the opportunity to review that prior to this hearing. The COVID Transparency Portal that was started over the last couple of days, that's also a big benefit. And I just encourage you to kind of expand that to some of the other aspects of the city's website, particularly the Board of E&amp;A with the exhibits on every agenda that show where, you know, when contracts are approved or revised and funds are transferred. None of those exhibits are posted online and I think it would really assist with public engagement if they were added online. Then my third major point is concerning kind of a missed opportunity of revenue, both to the city's general fund, about close to 20% of that of the general fund comes through, sorry, close to 20% of property tax goes to the general fund. And despite five years of the Board of Aldermen discussing incentive reforms, there've been little substantive measures taken in terms of the type of development projects that get approved. And just recently, in the past six or seven months, one company, you know, within about one and two years of completing luxury apartment buildings, sold them to West and East Coast investors and probably netted somewhere in the region of 15 to 20 or 25 million dollars in profit. The purchase of tho, purchases of those projects have respectively 18 years of tax abatement left and nine years of tax abatement left. And that same company just received approval on Monday at the Board of Aldermen for another, you know, luxury apartment building, no affordable housing units as part of it. Despite SODC staff expressing concerns at the committee that, you know, this project didn't fit their financial model because the developer finally admitted to them before the hearing that, you know, his plan was to sell this building to an out-of-state, well, just sell it to another operator. So I think there's major opportunity by examining how to direct some of that revenue back into the city, both to general revenue, but, you know, more importantly as well to public schools. The argument I heard for incentives for a lot of these projects is, you know, developers taking a big risk. And I think we should be asking a different question, which is, what are the risks that, you know, our children are taking? You know, every day they get out, out of bed and have to take a long trip to school, be concerned about, you know, bullets flying, you know, into their house. You know, I think we need to be talking about our children and the poor and vulnerable as much, you know, more than we're concerned about a developer taking a financial risk. So I think those are my major comments. And the LCRA Board of SODC kind of made a policy this week of trying to divert some revenue to affordable housing projects and small business lending. And I think that's a, you know, very good step in the right direction and something, you know, all aspects of city government, particularly E&amp;A and SODC need to review and see how we can, you know, promote, promote the provision of more affordable housing.
Thanks Gary. Stephanie, it appears that Mark is back at the bottom of the list again. M. Levinson.
We can take him next. Mark?
Still muted.
He's muted on his end.
Yeah. Mark, you'll have to unmute yourself on your end. We don't know if you've called in or not. Yes, you'll have to tell us which number you called into, like the last three digits for us to know which, which number to unmute. Mark?
May I increase the volume?
Mark?
He's unmuted, but he's.
Mark, can you tell us which, what the last three digits of the phone number that you're calling into so that we can unmute you on the phone side? We cannot hear you at all.
President Reed, if he's on the phone, I don't know that he can type in anything, so.
No, no, if he's on the phone, then you can unmute him and he can talk from there. I just got a. I just got a email. It looks like the 5160 may be the number he's dialed, he's dialing to.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, sorry for all of these problems. So, okay. So, starting where I left off, as I was saying, the taxi drivers pay the $4 per trip and $246 a month each for the right to be out at the airport. After the ride shares came, their rides dropped to about four or five per day. And after the pandemic came, it was down to one or two per day. The drivers dropped from a high of, I think, about 250 to 184, representing, you know, roughly 1,000 people in their families. And because of the problems and because it would take sometimes 12 hours to get a ride, I asked the director at the airport if we could suspend that $246 for a period of months because these folks literally were afraid of losing their homes, not having enough money to buy groceries. It's not like they were making a lot of money anyway. I got a letter from our fine airport director and what she said was she was willing to do everything within reason to help them, everything she could, but at this time, she couldn't offer the financial stay. She said the airport financials were sound, but there was a bill in the federal legislature for a $10 billion bailout for the airports and that it was a dynamic situation. It certainly their priorities were the safety of their partners, which they've been a partner now for about 10 years. I wrote the director back and she wrote me back saying that again, they were looking to this bailout. I now understand that the airport has received a $60 million bailout. The director was quoted as saying she was very happy with the revenue share they got and that they put themselves in a good financial position. It's my understanding that the government wants to keep workers on the payroll and the FAA has encouraged airports to spend the grant money they received immediately to help those in the worst public health position. So, so the relief we requested from the airport and if, and I've talked to President Reed, we could get relief through E&amp;A as well, is a stay for perhaps six months of that fee. The fee they were paying to the city is about $45,000 a month if all 184 taxis operate. Because of the situation there, they dropped down to 100 taxis in April and it will be 63 in May, which means the city would only get about $15,500 anyway. So the end result is because the situation is so bad, it is keeping the drivers from even going out to get their one or two rides a day because they can't afford the 246. So at a time when, you know, airlines are getting $25, $50, $50 million bailouts and the airport has come up with this 60 million and the director has said repeatedly, it's dynamic. Now they've got the money. It amounts to the city, which didn't want to lose the 45,000, is only getting 15,000 a month anyway. So for the 15,000 or so a month, it's good to help the least among us when the big, bigger companies are getting breaks. And some of them at the airport, I believe, are getting breaks too. So that's the situation. And if we could get some sort of stay of that $246 for a period of time, they can go out there and get even these minimal fares that they're willing to do. So that's the situation I would ask for E&amp;A. To the extent the mayor is able also to buy some sort of move on her own, do something, any, any help would be greatly appreciated and we appreciate you listening to us today.
Thank you, Mark, on that. As you might know, I, well, I get a report every day showing how many people flew out of our airport, took, took a flight out of the airport yesterday. It was around 850. So I know this is a very, very, very difficult time for, for everybody in the airport. So thanks for your comments.
Okay, well, I appreciate again the opportunity to talk to you all and stay healthy.
Thank you.
Next up.
Okay, bye-bye.
We're gonna, if we can, try to, try to stick with these three minutes. We're, I think we're approaching two hours here and we got a ways to go. So we want to hear from you, but just if you could talk faster succinctly, that'd be really appreciated.
Okay, we have Susanna Franklin and then we have Adam Pearson, who is recognized as Kevin Bourne on the list next.
Susanna, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Can now, thank you.
Okay. I am here for three years. I moved from Minnesota. My husband took a contract position in Missouri. And quite frankly, I've been shocked at some of the policies that I see here. The workhouse is one of them and clearly the workhouse and homelessness are, are connected. And it feels like we're in the 1950s here with the idea to take care of people and make them safe is to lock them up and incarcerate them rather than giving them opportunity for employment and safe housing. And as I said, it's just been shocking to me to see this in the United States. And so my comment and my question is, first of all, I would love it if you had at the end of this or someplace on your site, a place for folks like me who are concerned about the underserved and how we can make a tangible difference in boosting them up. I don't know whoever said it, but it's been said that the way we take care of the least of us really defines us as a society and clearly Missouri's falling behind. And not just a criticism, but I think it's pretty fair. My other comment is, in 2011, I had an aggressive breast cancer diagnosis and that really impacted my finances and even my ability to work. And I think one of the benefits of this virus is that perhaps folks who are not people of color might get a taste of what it feels like to have your resources dwindle and to have your hope or your quality of life taken away. It, it, it's clear that this is a racial issue here. And as a concerned citizen who'd like to make this place a little bit better based on, you know, the wonderful state that I come from and the directions and things I've seen there, I would be really open and encouraged to see how I can help those folks who can't help themselves. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Susanna. Next up.
Next up is Adam Pearson.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Yeah.
Hi, I'll be quick. My name is Adam Pearson with Peter and Paul Community Services. I'm the Chief Operating Officer. We offer housing and supportive services to individuals who are homeless, especially those who experience mental illness and live with HIV. There's been quite a bit of support on this call for full funding for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. That's all that I was going to say. I submitted a written comment. We can just submit that to public record and I'll, in my call. Thank you.
Thanks, Adam.
Thank you, Adam. You, Peter and Paul have been a good partner with the city for a long time. So thank you for the work that you do. I think it's more important now than, than ever. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Next up.
Madison. You can unmute yourself, Madison.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you.
Okay, hi. My name is Madison Orozco and I live in the 10th Ward. And I'm also a member of the Close the Workhouse Campaign. So I saw in the proposed budget presented on Wednesday that the city plans to decrease funding from the workhouse, funding to the workhouse from 16 million to 7.6 million. And while this is movement in a better direction, it's definitely not enough. With 112 detainees currently in the workhouse, the workhouse is only holding 10% of its total capacity and that's including the places that have been closed off and that people can't stay in anymore because those are places that at one point people could have or should have stayed. So it's only at 10% of its capacity. And also over the past five years, there has been a downward trend in the jail population, according to the city's website, with the average population decreasing from over 1,700 in 2013 to now at around 800 in 2020. So it does not make sense to continue pouring millions of dollars into the facility that holds such a small population when it's clear that there is also space in CJC, especially if you end the federal, the contract for the federal detainees. And especially in a time when our communities need this funding, need the additional eight or nine million that could come from this, especially during the COVID-19 crisis. I want to thank, I want to thank those who have supported closing the workhouse, like Comptroller Darling Green, who have done a lot of work on that front and who have really pushed for that. And I just want to say that I think now is the time to make this a reality, to completely defund the workhouse, to put that money back into our communities and to fulfill what the mayor actually stated as a desire in an interview on St. Louis Public Radio in January 2020 to have one jail in the city of St. Louis. And so I think now, more than ever, is the time to do that and that has been made clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Madison.
That was Madison, I believe.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Next one.
Alec.
Alec.
Alec, are you there?
Alec.
You have to, you have to unmute yourself, Alec.
Hello?
There we go. We hear you.
Sorry about that. Okay. Yeah, I wanted to thank the mayor, the president and the comptroller for organizing this meeting and for all your efforts that you're going through during these unprecedented times. My name is Alec Jesser. I'm a law student at Wash U. And I just wanted to urge the board to use this opportunity, to use this, this time to do something which I think is in the interest of St. Louis and it's most vulnerable and that is to finally close the workhouse. I want to ask the board to think empathetically here. We're all struggling. We're all in lockdown. We're all afraid of getting sick and we're afraid for our family members. Our lives have been upended. And I think it's a really logical extension to think about what it would be like to be behind bars right now. It's impossible to practice social distancing behind bars. It's impossible to feel safe in conditions of detention and custody because by definition, people there are controlling your movements. So all, you know, all I can say is if I'm scared day to day here on the outside, I can't imagine what it's like on the inside. And so I ask you to remember that these people are human beings like us. We cannot forget them, you know. And so I ask the board to, to bridge the gap and to free these people and close the workhouse so that they can be home with their families during these times, just like we are. Thank you.
Thank you, Alec. Next.
Inez Bordeaux.
Hi, Inez.
Hi. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Inez Bordeaux. I'm Manager of Community Collaborations at Arch City Defenders. I too wanted to start out by thanking Comptroller Darling Green for her leadership on this issue. We appreciate it. We, we appreciate her leadership and everything that she has done to help us move this issue forward. I'm not going to say a whole lot that hasn't already been said, but at Arch City Defenders, we are spending a lot of time talking about this idea of re-envisioning public safety. That means taking away from the things that do not make the city safe and investing in things that do make us safe. And over the last couple of years that we've been looking at the budget that we have been fighting to close the workhouse, 40% of our general fund budget, excuse me, 52% of our general fund budget goes to what's called public safety. 40% of that 52% specifically goes to police and the two jails in St. Louis. I want to remind everyone on this call that budgets are value statements. If you show me what your budget is, I will show you what your priorities are. And what St. Louis City has shown every single person that our priorities are locking people up and empowering the police departments. If police and jails actually made us safe, they gave 40% of our budget. If police and jails actually made us safe, we'd be the safest city in this country, but we are not. And why is that? The reason we aren't safe is because we aren't investing in people. We aren't safe because we aren't investing in communities. You want to empty out the workhouse? You want to empty out the jails? You want to decrease the violence in the city? You want to decrease the crime in the city? You do that by investing in people. Now, we're, based on the presentation that Paul Payne put on yesterday, we're facing a $40 million windfall. Yet the police and jails get 40% of our general fund budget. So how about we take some money away from those things and we invest in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund? We invest in job opportunities. We wrote, we invest in a robust education system. We put policies and procedures in place to help our unhoused communities. We build community centers. We have job programs for our children during the summer. And we can do all of that if we de, if we step away from the things that do not keep us safe. Why are we spending, I appreciate the efforts you guys are making in reducing the budget of the workhouse, but that's only halfway. Why not close it all the way? There are only 112 people in the workhouse today. That means we are literally spending $143,000 per person in the workhouse right now just to keep that facility open. Do you know what $143,000 could mean to my ward? It would mean the world to my world. Do you know what $143,000 could mean to the people that live in my community, the people who are facing evictions right now because they've lost their job? People who don't have food, people who don't have adequate transportation, people who are suffering in the city. And you guys have a responsibility as our elected officials to do something about it. So it's time for us to step away from the carceral system. It's time for us to stop spending $16 million on the workhouse. It's time for us to stop spending $170 million on police and invest in people. Invest in communities. Invest in the North Side that has been historically neglected and disrespected by every elected official that has held the office of mayor for the last 50 to 60 years. It's time to invest in people. Like, let's do that, please. As I'm ending my comments, I, if I could just get you to take away anything, please remember that budgets are value statements. Budgets are value statements. The priorities right now are all messed up for the city. We need to get back to investing in people. We need to invest in communities and this is how we make them safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Inez.
Next up.
Jay Shepherd.
Hi, Jay, are you there?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Is it Josh Shepherd?
It's Jay. I have a question.
Oh, Jay, I'm sorry. Okay.
The Affordable Housing Trust Fund could be funded beyond $16 million if we close the workhouse. So why not just close the workhouse and fund the Affordable Health, Affordable Housing Trust Fund? Another question. Recently, on January 17th, Mayor Lyda Krusen said that she wanted one jail in St. Louis City. Right now, as this was.
Jay, you are breaking up on us.
Can you hear me?
I can, but you're, you're kind of going in and out, so.
My main question is, what is your plan? If you've already stated that you would like to only have one jail in St. Louis City, what is your plan for having one city jail and what does your timeline look like?
Okay, thank you for that question.
And we have one, one final comment from Niles.
Niles, you still there?
So, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Yes. So, thank you for your time. I very much appreciate it. First, I want to thank Mayor Lyda Krusen for raising the minimum wage for all civil servants to $15 an hour earlier this year. That was incredible leadership, along with Tishara Jones, raising the minimum wage in the treacherous office to $15 an hour. And as a, I'm a civil servant and I can tell you, I can already see the difference that that's having on civil servants. I was also thrilled at Mayor Lyda Krusen's leadership on the back-to-back proposed 3% raises for civil servants because the mayor knows, the leadership knows, and the civil servant more than anyone, that civil servants are underrated and they work hard and they keep the city safe, especially during times like COVID pandemics. I was crushed to see the initial proposal that the, this is, the mayor raises the additional 1.5% for blocking the proposed budget coming up. And even more crushed to see that in the, you know, Gaster's budget, or, or no reason for civil servants next couple of. Overstate how incredibly workers are and how badly they need these raises. I also cannot, important aid event in professional force in crisis like our department. I just say, reconsider the way we just asked them. How you make it back. How to lose. The comment for the first time in my professional city. First professional, I can representation. The first one who gave me that opportunity. Investment, those actions were investment in me. That was going so powerful to see that job just in weeks after it's actually passed. And the, you're revising the budget. If it's reversed for, you know, keeping versus our city workers, that's for me. An emergency. If we had $100,000 emergency fund, keep rate packed. As well as what Nick talked about regarding tax abatements for corporations. I mean, the city workers are workers too. If you want to put, you know, money directly into the city, we all live in the city. We all work for the city. Reconsider some of these tax abatement for the mega-rich and give us, keep us our raises. I mean, we, we, the raises were always, were already given to us. And now to see them taken away, it's, it's just devastating news. So, I so appreciate your leadership, Mayor Lyda Krusen. And to the budget and apportionment committee, I please appeal to reconsider taking away our 3% raises. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Niles. I agree that even thinking about taking away those raises is crushing. And we are committed to that. We all just passed it just three months ago, two months, three, three months ago, maybe. And so, we are trying to save every city job possible. And I know this will continue to be a conversation because we, we do want to pay city workers what they're worth. Or at least better than what they're paid now. So, thank you.
Mayor Krusen, there is one, one last comment. Amanda Colin Smith.
Amanda? Amanda, we can barely, barely hear you. And where volume is all the way up.
A little bit better now?
Yeah, that's definitely better. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you so much to the members of the Board of E&amp;A for your leadership during this crisis. It's very much unprecedented times and difficult decisions are to be made. I just wanted to give one more push for the callers in today regarding the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I'm the executive director at Dutch Town South Community Corporation. And our organization receives funding regarding tenant rights education in the community. Folks have mentioned how when the eviction moratorium is up, tenants will be some of the most vulnerable going forward. And so, I would really just continue to urge you to continue to fund the trust fund at the current levels that the CBN Coalition and others have been urging to increase. And start, start there. And then if, you know, going forward to the full board, then, you know, things have to go, you know, closer to that $5 million and so be it. But to start with that priority being clear by staying where we are right now is definitely going to be needed going forward. So, thank you so much. And that's it. Take care.
Thank you, Amanda. Quick question. How much does your organization get out of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund?
$20,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. So, if that is all the speakers, is that right, Stephanie?
We do have one other person that raised their hand, but I don't know if we want to. I don't know if they weren't, I don't have a full name here. Let's see.
Jasmine Williams looks like, is that the one?
We got.
Okay, we'll go with that one.
Jasmine Williams?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can now, Jasmine.
Hi, good afternoon. I just wanted to quickly thank everyone for their hard work during this time. I know it's been very difficult for everyone. And I just wanted to echo a lot of the comments behind, close the workhouse. I am from Florist, Missouri, but I have experienced the hardships that come along with having someone incarcerated by the workhouse. I am a student at the University of Missouri-St. Louis. And I testify in support of defunding and, defunding the workhouse and using that money elsewhere to support and invest in the community.
Okay. Thank you, Jasmine. Okay, anyone else with a hand up?
No one else.
Okay. So, I want to just say thank you to everyone for spending the time. This has been a couple hours, spending the time and sticking with us here during this public hearing on the budget. It's a very important process and we appreciate being able to hear from you. We, I know that we'll be all chatting about this. I think it's Tuesday. It's Tuesday, the vote out. Let me look here. I'm going to look.
Monday.
It's Monday. Okay, thank you. So, it's Monday. So, we'll all be talking about this over the weekend and and we'll come together and see whether we vote the budget out as it's presented here, go to the Board of Alderman or whether we make some changes to it. But either way, we know that this is a starting point on the budget. One of the things I would say is that we're very hopeful that, that the tax revenue is not cut as much as what we've projected here. We have to be very nimble in this budget by, you know, in another 30 days, we're actually, we're going to know more. And 30 days beyond that, we will know even more. So, by the time we get to the 1st of July, which is when the new budget year starts, we will have better information. And that, I think, will be helpful to all of us going forward. So, I think we're going to have to be a little bit nimble this year and going into next year as we see what kind of revenue comes back. Many of you know, I don't know if all of you are, are city residents or not. I think some of you are, some of you aren't. Those of you who are city residents are paying the earnings tax. And the earnings tax is 36% of the budget this year. And then another 8% on the payroll tax. So, there's 42% of our budget, which is from the earnings and payroll tax. And as, as I know you know, 26 million people in the United States have applied for unemployment. So, certainly, we know our revenue is going to be way down. And as people's earnings are way down, they're also not spending because they're either not going out because they're staying at home, which thank you to all of you who are staying at home, helping us to tamp down the spread of COVID-19. But we also know that that impacts our, our sales tax. So, thanks so much to everybody. And we, we need to stay nimble and we need to get more information as time goes along to figure out exactly what, what has to happen. So, that's the end of my comments. President Reed or Comptroller Green, if you have any comments before we adjourn?
I certainly have some comments, Madam Mayor. Thank you. We have had a robust meeting today with several concerned community leaders. And I want to thank all of the community leaders for chiming in and taking the turn out of their schedule to, to chime in and comment on this budget. This is a budget where we have been impacted greatly by the loss of, of tax revenues. And, but we have several comments regarding the affordable housing for rental relief and for funding several nonprofit organizations that help people in need. I want to let the people who have come know that I take those comments to heart. Also, those comments that are regarding, close the workhouse. I take those comments to heart. There's work to be done there. There were also comments regarding economic incentives primarily and particularly the tax abatements. For years, I have stressed that that particular economic incentive should be only left for affordable housing or affordable economic developments in dire neighborhoods such as the North Side, not for market rate luxury apartments. That does take away from the areas where those property taxes are needed to fund this, in this city. So, I just, I just want to say thank you for, for your comments, all who have taken the time out. And as the mayor stated, we will be discussing this over the next several days to make sure that we come up with a budget that represents what we should all be about. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Comptroller and all of our, you know, everyone that participated in today's meeting, including those who just listened, right? I want to thank everybody for, you know, coming together to try to work, you know, collectively through this very difficult time in the city of St. Louis. This is a completely unprecedented moment in time for not just the city, but our, you know, the entire globe. We can't even say our nation, but the entire globe, everybody on the planet. And it's going to take some difficult decisions to make it through it. I am confident that we're going to get there. I am, you know, also looking forward to working with each and every member of the Board of Alderman when we receive the budget to begin working on it. And I also want to just let everyone know that the current budget that you see is not the final budget, right? But it does provide, you know, a strong guide to, to, you know, a roadmap laid out by the budget director as to how we address some of the budget shortfalls that we see in our budget. So, again, thanks to all who participated today. Thanks to everyone who chimed in on comments. You know, I think back on the days before we had the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and being one of the people who structured that bill and worked to get it passed. And the impact that it's had over time has just been, you know, awesome. But we're going to have to find ways to fully fund it. We were well on our way last year. We're falling short this year for obvious reasons. But I'm looking forward to continuing to work on this budget so that we deliver a budget that's balanced and a budget that takes into account our current state and the state of families all across our cities. Families are hurting, businesses are hurting, you know, people all over the city. So, so again, if you have any additional questions or comments, please email myself, the mayor and the comptroller, and also the clerk of the Board of Alderman so that we can take a look at those comments and let those comments help guide what we're doing. Thank you so much again, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. If there are no further comments. Stephanie, is, are there any instructions that you want to give people for emailing in anything? Just go to the city website, to the Board of E&amp;A tab, and they can click on something and email?
Yes, there's, there's a standard at the bottom that sends the email directly to our email. And there are 28 open comments in here. 16 related to close the workhouse, six related to the affordable housing, two general comments, and then one comment on COVID-19. So, do we want to just forward those to the, you, you all individually, along with the comments that come in? I'm sure they've already come in. There are some in the email now that I can see about 11 or 12. Should we?
I'd like to see all of them. I mean, I know, I know this is a fluid thing, but you could send it to its, you know, end of the day to day, maybe, or.
There's a report, there's a report that, that can be generated to produce the comments here. The emails, of course, can be sent directly to you.
That, that's great. Thank you. Just keep us informed.
And also, if anyone out there would like to send email directly to the Board of Alderman, if you go to the Board of Alderman's website, which is linked in the city's website, you can email directly any one of Alderman and also myself.
Absolutely.
And I believe the same thing with the comptroller.
Right. We, we all, we all get emails.
Yes.
I actually am scrolling down those comments right now, taking a look at them.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn this session of the Board of E&amp;A.
Second.
All in favor of adjourning? Aye. Thank you all. Thanks to everyone. Bye-bye.